We were able to work through that and get things back up and going in a quick fashion. Of course, we have backups when the phone systems go down. They roll over to another agency to help us with that. So, in terms of radio communications outside of the house, we're able to have backup communications through our communications trailer that was brought in and placed in the parking lot next to the law enforcement center. Some other short-term recommendations include connecting the 911 consoles to large battery backup systems, and that has been completed since the storm. Also adding phone and internet connections to the emergency management office that was used as a joint information center. That was something that was not in place, so our public information staff had to juggle phone lines and internet connections, and it was a little bit challenging for them, but they did an excellent job. We also need to improve Wi-Fi access for all the folks that are coming into the emergency operations center that have their different technology that they're bringing with them. And we also need to be able to bring additional whiteboards into the emergency operations center for tracking statuses of different information, and so, for example, shelters, numbers of people in the shelters, all the different resources that are deployed in the field, so that all you need to do is look up from a table and see that information posted on a board and be able to communicate it to other folks in the room or other folks out in the field. As far as the operational challenges in the emergency operations center, we need additional agency representation. It's a small room, and it was packed, but there are some other agencies that if we could have had them there, it felt like we would have been a little more beneficial in terms of being able to make some decisions quicker. It was a little tougher to chase folks down. Couple of those agencies, and it's no fault of theirs, it's just the way the plan was designed, and we need to work on the plan for the future. The Department of Transportation, and then some of the smaller electrical cooperatives, of course, it'd be tough for them to have folks in our emergency operations center, and they don't necessarily have to be there physically, we just have to be able to reach out to them and communicate with them when the time is needed and when the situation calls for it. In terms of being able to provide updates and information in the room and share information in the room, we're gonna have to do a better job of briefings, doing that on a more regular basis. Sometimes things got hectic, and it got stretched out, and we weren't able to provide the information that other folks in the room needed. You could have been working at a table over here on the left-hand side of the room and then on the opposite side of the room, not knowing really what's going on unless you had a briefing. So, that's where regular briefings are important, and we're gonna try to do better about that. That's just a plan and a process issue. We also need to grant access to a internal data system to all emergency operations center participants. So, if you have a mobile device or you have a laptop, you're hoping that you're able to communicate not only with folks that you're working with outside the EOC, but also with folks in the room, so everybody has similar information and can make good, sound decisions based on that timely information. As part of EOC briefings, we also need to include a schedule and designate somebody that can be a timekeeper coordinator that can help us keep briefings and planning processes on schedule. When it came to ordering commodities, we found the need pretty rapidly to assign a position just to track and to work with logistics. This really came into play when we talked about the points of distribution for bottled water. We were fortunate to be able to bring in a team of folks from state emergency management that helped us with this process, you know, right at the end of the storm in terms of being able to get that distributed, and of course, within at least, I think it was within 36 or 48 hours, those folks ended up getting pulled from us and sent down to Lumberton because the situation was getting worse down there than our situation at that particular moment. But we were fortunate to have those folks. But it pointed out the fact that we do need more people trained in logistics and being able to order commodities and track commodities. We also need to establish and update a canny animal response team. There were some situations that occurred where there were large animal rescues immediately prior to the storm where folks in agricultural settings needed some assistance getting animals out of dangerous situations and away from the river, basically. So, we have identified a need for that. We're gonna look at the resources and supplies that'll be needed for that purpose and work to create a team that can respond to large animal emergencies. Sheltering, as far as facilities and some of the different issues that we ran into, there were issues at Southview Middle School and Southview High School. The residents of these shelters had to be moved twice due to a generator problem, a roof leak, and plumbing issues. Once the schools opened after the storm, there was a question about whether the shelter should remain open while school was in session. The recommendation is to find another location in the Hope Mills area that's more conducive to multi-day emergency sheltering. Shelter staff recommend using recreational centers when possible in lieu of schools for shelter locations. So, this is something that we'll look at and work with our partners to see if we can improve on next time. As far as special needs sheltering, we were unable to set up a special needs shelter just specifically for that population due to the special needs equipment trailer being flooded. It was actually housed at the sheriff's training facility, and that whole area back there flooded. We actually lost several different trailers and pieces of equipment. So, lesson learned in that situation for the future. We also, we must be able to provide special needs shelter for those folks locally, and also because we're part of a system that sets up and houses folks from Brunswick County that may have special needs if a hurricane's approaching. Of course, we usually have state assistance on that, but for whatever reason, they didn't choose to use us for that purpose this time, so we didn't have access to those types of equipment that would have been needed for a special needs shelter since we lost ours. In terms of the shelter operations themselves, there were some issues. Emergency management, DSS, and the health department has met with Red Cross to discuss future shelter operations and updating our local agreements. Some of these issues included maintaining a continuous Red Cross presence in the emergency operations center, coordination staffing and follow-up at the shelters, sometimes what seemed to be inconsistent rules of the shelters, such as clear guidance as far as what is allowed in the shelters regarding companion animals versus service animals based upon Americans with the Disability Act requirements. We needed greater availability of a medical liaison in the shelter situations. Also, meal delivery and perishable food safety concerns were an issue. In terms of screening, there were some issues with screening sex offenders from the general shelter population. This was worked out, and folks were identified that needed to be separated from the general population, so there were no issues that came up from that, but it just pointed out in terms of the process the kinds of things you need to be on lookout for and need to be prepared for when you're operating a shelter for long-term period of time. Okay? Again, special needs, we did not establish that type of shelter, but we were prepared in case we had to have those types of folks in our shelters. There were some issues with folks being discharged that we weren't prepared for, but we worked that out. So, some things you work out on the fly as you go, you know? You can't plan and be prepared for everything. You have to respond and sometimes make adjustments. There was also identified a need for mental health representation in the shelters. That was tough during the storms. There really wasn't the presence or the capability to provide that type of level of service for long-term periods of time when your shelter's operating for multiple days in a row. And again, we just need to work closely with the hospital system when it comes to discharging patients to make sure that everybody has their needs met and that there's a better coordination in the future. There's also needs to be a better way to address the needs of homeless shelteries before, during, and after a disaster. This is a challenging population for a lot of different reasons. They have different needs than a lot of other folks, and it was something that our shelters really had a challenge dealing with for long periods of time and for days and days in a row. In terms of communication, we're looking at updating our mass notification system. Everybody's fairly familiar with code RED and what it can do. There are newer products on the market that have more functionality and more features, so we're looking at that, just to modernize that technology, and also looking at ways to screen, route, and handle calls within the emergency operations center, and we identified a need for more training and adequate staffing when it came to handling those types of calls. Call center coordination has to be established to handle calls from citizens. We did that and received those calls from lots of different routes. Sometimes they came into 911 center, sometimes they came into joint information center. Sometimes they came in directly to the emergency operations center. There was a period of time where our 911 center was overwhelmed with calls from travelers passing through the area or coming towards Cumberland County, north and south, east, not so much from the east, but some from the west, trying to find directions, and it really bogged down our staff. So, that's something that we've gotta look at in the future in terms of being prepared to handle all types of calls and the volume of calls. That's something that we really had no idea was gonna happen until it did happen, so. I'm sure you have questions. I'll do my best to try to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, let me say thank you to staff for everything that you've done and continue to do to help individuals with this storm. And speaking of that, and maybe you can answer now, maybe, I don't want to ask a question here that I could ask later on, but I'm just curious to know about the residents. There were a number of residents that were displaced and still are displaced. Do we have an update on what's going on with that part of the Hurricane Matthew?
Yes. You know, I think for the average citizen in Cumberland County, you probably don't realize that things aren't back to normal for a large group of people. There are still hundreds of families that are in hotels that are receiving temporary assistance from FEMA. We're working with local nonprofit groups, working with the state, working with FEMA and churches to try to meet the needs of those folks, but also plan for the what's next. What's next for a lot of these folks may be more time in the hotels, a long process towards reconstruction if that's possible, depending on their individual situation. And every situation's unique, I'll have to say that. So, in the short term, we'll be working with the state and federal officials to try to, as best as possible, establish temporary housing needs for folks as they're on their trail or their journey towards their final permanent housing situation, whatever that's gonna be.
Okay. When you speak of temporary housing, are we still talking about the hotels, or are we talking about what I understand?
Well, and that's the challenge. It's where we try to find out from FEMA and from the state what they can do, what they will do. We look around at some other counties and see what's happening. I know there's some counties where they brought in mobile homes, where we haven't really seen that taking place here. Right now, we've tried to create a list of what's available in terms of apartments and other types of housing and try to match people with available housing based on their funds and their situation. There are a number of people, of course, who are staying with families and friends, so it's just, it's spread all across the spectrum in terms of temporary housing needs.
Okay, sir. And again, I wanna thank you all, 'cause I know firsthand that you work very hard at trying to help those individuals that are going through this unfortunate problem, situation here, and so, thank you. And I personally, I know, I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Keith.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Let me start off by saying it's hard to believe it's only about 90 days ago that all this happened. I mean, it seems like a long time. I echo Commissioner Evans. You know, during this disaster, the staff, you guys were amazing. I mean, everybody was putting it all together. Everybody checked their egos at the door, as you stated. Everybody worked towards the common good. It was very impressive. It was a proud day for Cumberland County. I do wanna mention a couple things. First of all, the faith-based community really stepped up also on a lot of different levels, helping out, and you know, we're talking about really the disaster right now, and when everybody had to come together, the faith-based communities came. There's a couple of things that struck me during all of this, and I was wondering if you might could give a little bit of feedback. I'm glad to see that we're gonna be talking about the volunteer fire departments, 'cause they really had some challenges. We actually lost one of the fire departments during the storm, and they had to relocate and really didn't miss a beat, but continued to do the rescue, so it's gonna be interesting to see that. One of the things that struck me was what is going to be the protocol on an emergency situation like this during the rescue to get federal help? There seemed to be a little bit of a disconnect about the request and where it would come from, maybe to help our, you know, our neighbors at Fort Bragg to be able to help us with the Swift Water and some of the other things. And I'm not really looking for an answer tonight, but I was just wondering, that should be addressed. The protocol, I realize that we just can't ask Fort Bragg to come out here and throw out a few, but the protocol of having that is probably, should be addressed. And one of the things that struck me was the number of people who came up and were so reliant on social media for information. When they lost power, they couldn't get out of their neighborhoods like Raykonda and Kings Grant, or their roads were flooded. It's the only thing they had was their phone, and I found out that communication was a big factor in that network, 'cause that was the only place where people had. You'd mentioned all the 911 calls. They were actually coming in with text messages and Facebook messages and Twitter and everything else that's out there, and it's, you know, it's probably something we should work with. But overall, very proud of what we did, very proud of the city, and they're working with it, and I think all of us should be proud of not only the staff, but how we all worked together during this disaster. Thank you.
Commissioner Counsel.
I just had to weigh in. I'm sorry. What amazed me was all the extra hours our staff, you know, county staff was putting in down at the shelter. Meanwhile, everyday life was going on, 'cause I got some calls about regular stuff. Here's water flooding what I thought was all the county, and people asking about, you know, and here's, there's a cat on my car or something crazy like that. You all went around the clock, and when we visited the city, I found a person, we found a person who herself had had her own house flooded. It absolutely astounds me, the lengths that county, that our staff goes to for our citizens. So, while I packed a care bag with two or three cans of pork and beans and some corned beef hash for somebody who said he couldn't find anybody on the telephone, he had 10 extra people in his house, I said, "Honey, that's all I got. You can come get it. I'm gonna put it on my porch." But I thought, if that's all you got to complain about, God bless you. But you all didn't get a break. Nobody got a break. People are still suffering in our county. They don't have what they need. Houses of worship have been decimated. I know my own has, and we don't know where the funds are coming from, and what bothered me was something, I don't know whether it was Jimmy or Charles. One of you said something that led me, I went back and flipping pages in my head, wondering what would happen if another emergency, a catastrophe, came on top of that one. Do we have enough money to meet the basic needs of our citizens? And that's what bothers me. But all of us, thank you. Every single, every single one of us sitting up here, thank you for what you have done. And I think of all the phone calls that I made. You had to help people, and if every commissioner made as many phone calls as I did, well, what about such and such, and what about this, and what about that, and what about the other? And you had to answer those calls and look at individual situations while trying to make sure that all of our citizens were assisted. It's amazing to me. It's amazing.
Yes, ma'am. There's a lot of things to go around, just to emergency operations center staff, our 911 center staff, our public information center staff, the manager. We thank you for your support, of course, and also the folks in the field. There were a lot of stories, untold stories, about the hurricane, things that no one will ever know, but those of us in the EOC heard and those of us in the EOC were afraid many others were gonna lose their lives. And it's unfortunate that there was any loss of life, but it could have been greater than it was, and I think the fact that our folks responded and that they did a stellar job and they went above and beyond speaks volumes about their dedication and commitment.
Commissioner Boos.
I'd like to echo everybody else's responses, especially Commissioner Keith's, on how proud I was of not only the county, but the county as a whole, including the city, the municipal towns that are our satellite towns and everything. There wasn't a time that everybody said, "Oh, I'm sorry, we're not gonna help that person over there because they're a little bit outside the Hope Mills district," or you saw city police officers, you know, on the line on county fire trucks, you know, helping out. And it's a shame that it took such a natural disaster for us to all realize how much we have in common and how well we can work together when everyone does. And I'm hoping if anything else we take away from all that, it's the fact that this territorialism stuff's gotta stop. You know, there's, you know, in fact, one of our applicants for the sheriff recently, one of the things that stuck with me when Commissioner Keith and I were talking to him one afternoon, said that his philosophy of law enforcement is he doesn't see a city or a county resident, he sees a citizen in trouble. That's what it's all about.
Nations have no boundaries.
Thank you, commissioners. I would just like to, and I'm not gonna echo what they said, but what people don't realize, there were actually two disasters. We had the first rain, and then the second one, so we went from one right into the other. The question I would ask, I saw the presentation, you talked about the action points. When can we expect to have something in front of us as to those action points of what we need to do, or, so what kind of timetable do we have?
I would anticipate meeting with the volunteer fire department sometime mid-February. Hopefully, we can wrap that up and have everything done, maybe early, mid-March, at least on the response side. Now, of course, recovery's ongoing and...
Well, no, no. What I'm, I guess I'm talking about is you had several items in there...
Right.
...that the commissioners needed to act upon.
Well...
You had some elected officials and some of those other things.
In terms of training.
Oh, yeah, training, and we're looking at the 911, but whatever action items that were required, we, you know, so they don't just...
Yes, sir.
...kinda float out there, some kind of timetable that that comes back.
Right.
So, if you can do that...
We can work on that and put that together for you.
And you can bring it to a committee meeting as opposed to a board meeting.
Yes, sir.
We can talk about that. Thank you, Tracy. I think you and the staff did an excellent job. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir.
We will go, are you off in the lead?
Yes.
Huh? Okay, 'cause I was, well, let me do this. If you all sit down, and I know that we were going to the nomination and boards and committees, if y'all would just give me a moment just to kinda get out of order, because they're here, I was gonna allow at the end both of our persons who were here today, who were out, Rebecca and Katie, to come to the podium and just give us a little bit of overview of what you saw, or what you enjoyed, or what you didn't enjoy, why you're, yeah, 'cause everybody got, take some pictures. There you go. And this is the vice president, Rebecca Mitchell.
Yes. Hello. I wanna thank you all for having us here. I really appreciate this. I learned a lot. Actually, we're having a state conference in February, and we're gonna, I'm hosting a Mott County Commissioners Meeting, so this definitely helped me, helped me figure out how the meetings actually run, so I thank you for this opportunity, and I appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Katie Stafford. As you all know, I am the senior secretary of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and I believe that this was a great opportunity for us youth to get involved with the community and to know exactly what's going on in the community around us, and I am very appreciative to have the opportunity to be here and to witness it for myself, so thank you.
Y'all will come around. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna let them go with you when you go, Ms. Crystal, so they don't have, 'cause after that, we're just gonna go into closed session and some other things, so I don't think they wanna just sit here and wait on all of that.
They might.
Well, they may. Mr. Evans said he didn't wanna sit here.
No, I didn't.
I'm teasing. Wait a minute, baby, I got the family call. I want you to give this to this...
It was a prayer. You have to pray twice for these guys.
I want you to give this to this... I'm too sad. What is he doing?
Go to Chick-fil-A.
Thank you so much. Come on, y'all, squeeze in. Squeeze in, squeeze in, squeeze in, squeeze in.
This is gonna be the lead story on the Fayetteville Observer tomorrow.
Yeah, that's right.
And a rice tea.
Do you remember some of the girls? She was just as chipper at the city, and she had lost her whole...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And she was just as, she was just as...
I can't wait for this new playboy.
Friendly, yes. You don't think about it.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. See you next week.
They said Mott Commissioners Meeting, right?
This was a mock. That's what you say, it's a mock right here. All right, if we can return to the agenda, Commissioner Fairclough's having a good time down there. Nominations to boards and committees, Cumberland County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Commissioner Counsel.
There are five vacancies. As juvenile defense attorney, I recommend I nominate Michael Honifer as businessperson, Austin Campbell for United, no, a nonprofit, Terry Thomas, for Deborah Rosen to be reappointed, and to Dwight Creach to be reappointed.
Are there any other nominees? Nominations to the Cumberland County Local Elementary Planning Committee, Commissioner Boos.
Thank you, sir. There are three openings, and we're fortunate enough that three that are going all are eligible for, not only eligible for reappointment, but have indicated they would like to be reappointed and serve again. So, at this time, I move that Captain J.T. Morgan, who's currently the law enforcement representative, be reappointed, that Greg Phillips, the current health representative appointee, be reappointed, and James Bullard Jr., the first aid representative, be reappointed.
Are there any other nominations? Item number eight, appointments to boards and Commissioner Vice Chairman Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the nominations, the names that we have received for the Board of Health and KF Valley Health System Board of Trustees, which is two vacancies for that position, and one for Board of Health, there being an equal number of vacancies and nominees, I hereby move to appoint Dr. William Philbrick to the Board of Health, and Alicia Marks and Dr. Bradley Burchard to the KF Valley Health System Board of Trustees in their respective positions.
Second?
It's been moved to second. All in favor?
Unanimous.
And with that, item nine, closed session, if I can get a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
It's been moved and second, and we go in pursuant to the general statutes outlined by the county manager at the beginning of the meeting for economic development. Are all those in favor?
Unanimous.
We'll go into closed session. Will go in the closed session. Second. All those in favor? Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.